Good evening, President Fister.
Good evening.
Interim Superintendent Parks in Board of Education. I have two relatively short presentations. One is amending this year's budget. So it will give us a picture where we think we're going to end up this year. And then also some information, a variety of data points that we can look, that will help us shape what next year looks like and beyond. So for this year, we're adjusting our revenues and expenditures. So first, we'll do our revenues. So the first item, I'm just going to give the highlights because we made a lot, a lot of changes to our budget. So the first one is our local taxes. Our local taxes were actually much higher than what was budgeted. But the local taxes do not affect the bottom line because it is part of a foundation allowance. So the more we get locally, the less we get from the state. So this item, even though it's, and everything you see in green is great. Everything you see in red, not good. So we're adding, we're changing a budget to reflect this increase in local taxes. We have, we had in the budget, an item that happened last year. It was for the unfunded accrual liability for retirement. And we get that every year, but also last year, there was also one time that came in and then it was with the unfunded accrual liability. We get the money and then next payroll, we send it back to the state. On the revenue side, it was this one-time item that happened last year was still in the budget. So we are removing, it's not happening this year, so we're removing it. We still get unfunded accrual liability funding from the state that we, that we have been getting for several years now. The state revenues, as I mentioned earlier, when the tax revenue increases, the state revenues go down for the same amount for a foundation allowance, but we receive funding in other areas, more at-risk money and so forth, but we still had to reduce our state revenues down by $1.4 million. In our federal funding, which again, this does not impact the bottom line because they're all grants, all our federal funding. So it's, we, we get paid what we spent. And if we receive, you know, additional money, then we have to carry over to the next year. So we're transferring primarily, there's a carryovers from the prior years that spend from various grants because the grants do not end on June 30th, most of them go to September 30th. So we carry over what we didn't spend. The next item is the Act 18, which is the kind of wide special education mileage that the WISD levies. And because the taxpayers went higher and a special education cost went higher, then we were entitled to more reimbursement. That $3.4 million, that actually affects the bottom line. But overall, on our revenues have decreased by $3.4 million. So next, we'll do our expenditures. So after reviewing all the salaries and benefits of all the employees that we had, they were, we needed to add $3.7 million to our budget to cover those expenditures. We had to do the same thing for maintenance and operations. Last year, we spent approximately $25 million. In the budget, there was approximately $21 million. We believe we'll be closer to $24 million this year. So we're adjusting our maintenance and operations by that. Also any other, all the other expenditures that we had, whether it's contracted services, supplies and so forth, we're estimating that's going to be an additional $2.9 million for the school districts. So overall, our expenditures have increased by $9.4 million. Next, our current budget that was adopted last June shows that we will be adding to fund balance approximately $6.3 million. Now that we're doing the amendment, it will show, the budget will show that we will actually use $6.6 million of fund balance, which we leave that school district with $6.3 million in fund balance. The new projected, and the fund balance is projected to be 2% of revenues or 1.96% of expenditures. There is early warning legislation that basically requires that school districts 5% of revenues, 5% of revenues as fund balance, which in our case, it should be $15.7 million. There's also a board of education policy that requires that we have at least 6% of fund balance of expenditures, up to 15% of expenditures, which is $19.3 million to $48.2 million. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have before I move on to the next presentation. Yes?
Going back a slide, $14 million of retirement state, one more. Yeah, eliminate one-time state retirement funding from prior, $14 million. That's a tremendous amount of money and I'm still trying to understand this. So let me, let me share what I know. There's a standard amount that the state gives to us and then we give back, but it's like their payment. So that should be reflected in both the revenues and the expenditures.
That is true.
There's this additional last year amount of $14 million of revenue. Did that not go back to the state?
It did. Last year, there was $40 million in the revenue side and $40 million on the expenditure side.
And for this year's budget, they put in the $14 million expecting us to get it, which is a presumption number one, but why wouldn't it also be in the expenditure side if it's always gone back?
I, I understand your question. I cannot answer the question why. I wasn't here.
And just an enormous, given the numbers, that's an enormous amount.
I'm trying to correct whatever is, I'm trying to tell you the truth, what, what is happening.
But that $14 million was on one side, but not on the other.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. So I'm right to assume it gave us a distorted view of what our budget and our fund balance was?
I believe so, yes.
I'll save further discussion for later.
Any other questions, trustees? Please continue then.
Thank you. So first, we looked at 10 years of staffing and also 10 years of our student enrollment. And you can see on the total change that we've added 480 staff and we've added 4.4 students at the same time over the 10-year period. You can see that at the times when we were adding most of the employees, that the number of students, our student enrollment was getting greater and greater. As time went by and COVID happened, that we have lost approximately 1,100 students. At the same time, staffing was not changed. Actually, you look at the same time, we've added about 52 positions. So most of the staffing, there's 480, about 417 were actually teachers. So in this, we're showing what happened to a foundation allowance. And you can see the change every year. So in the last three years, we've actually received almost 1,100. And out of the 1,500, most of the money came this last three years. And then you can see what happened to the fund balance. And then the last two years, the numbers that are not, that are in yellow is what we are projecting. They're not audited numbers. All the other numbers are audited. So you can see when we were actually getting the biggest increases, actually we're using most of our fund balance. So you can see that we've actually reduced our fund balance by, during this time period, by 10 and a half million, whereas a student foundational allowance increased by $1,500. This shows what's happened to our revenues and expenditures over time. So it'll show you that our revenues have increased by approximately almost 105 million. And then our expenditures increased by 119 million. And there are some big variances. And I know some money came in from the federal government for COVID and so forth, but also our expenditures actually increased much more than the money that was, that was, that was coming in. So there's approximately $14.5 million difference between the two. So the, I already mentioned the staffing costs. Also, the increase over the past five years due to compensation and retirement and healthcare, all those kinds of things have increased costs for the school districts significantly. And last year, which was approved, I believe, last June, and it's actually affecting this year and every year from this point on, there was a collective bargaining agreement with all the groups and non-union groups, which cost approximately $13.1 million. So what's happened to the fund balance, to me, fund balance is like oxygen. If you don't have oxygen, you can't survive. If you don't have a fund balance, you can't survive. And again, you can see that last year, when the audit was presented, we were at 4.06. And I already mentioned earlier that the state requires that we have at least five, a board policy at least six to 15. So this year, like when we did the amendment, I already showed that we expect to use $6.6 million of our fund balance. So we expect to be dropping our 1.96. I would like to mention that we have already received notification from the Treasury Department, from the state. Because last year, we were, I'm sorry. It was last year, we were below the 5%. And they are asking us to submit to them a plan on how we are going to get back. So this shows what happened to all the other school districts. This is the statewide fund balance average. So you can see that back here, we were actually a bit higher than the average of the state. And then this is an urban public schools. And then this is what's happened to the state. State has approximately on the average, 23.27%. And that's as of last year, where we were at 4.06. So in conclusion, the additions of staff, the increases that we gave to employees and the loss of enrollment, all three of those played a significant role in these financial challenges that the school district has. About 80% of the cost of the school district are made of staffing cost. In addition, there is another 10% that is basically the custodial contract, the transportation contract, the edge of staff, which is a substitute teacher's contract. Even though those are contracts, there are staff involved that provide services to a school district. So about 90% of the school district's cost is made out of people. So there is no way for us to adjust the budget without affecting people, unfortunately. So it is my recommendation that we reduce our budget for next year. It is too late to affect the budget this year by 25 million. And I know that we're making certain assumptions now when we're building next year's budget. But our goal is to get the school district somewhere between 6% to 7% fund balance. So then we will be in compliance with state regulations or legislation. And we'll be in compliance with the board of education policy. I believe these reductions are necessary to begin to bring the district back to financial health and viability. I'd be more than happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Trustee Mohammed.
So I did want to ask, I know if we can look at the slide with the trends as far as the, not this one, I think it's this one.
This one?
I guess both of them.
Okay.
So would you, would you say that the change in our budget, what we were seeing in the change in our budget started around the year of 2021, 2022, and just gotten worse over time? Like what trends, that's what I'm seeing as far as the trends of the data when I first saw it. But just to kind of understand the impact and the trends with what has happened.
So when, when this happened over here, there should have been adjustments to our staffing. So there was, there were no adjustments to our staffing. And also, last year, we, we agreed to a collective bargaining agreements that brought us, we were already below the 5% and the 6%. And then it is affecting this year and following years by agreeing to $13.1 million of collective bargaining agreements. So that played a factor. And the additions of staff that happened over this time, that, that, those are the three factors that I see that over time have affected. And without COVID, this wouldn't happen. All those things played a role.
And can I have just another follow-up? Cause I just wanted, cause you said something about the steps, especially around that time when, I mean, you're obviously seeing it, there was an increase and there was no change that was, that was made. But what steps were, do you know of any or are you aware? And it could be a question for, for us too. But what steps were taken prior to knowing about like where we are? Well, not this year, but even when we approved that budget of 4.06. What steps were taken prior to that? Because obviously with the contract negotiation and, and everything, obviously, we know, I mean, we're at, we approved the budget, but what were the steps that were taken even prior to that? Or plan?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not aware.
I know you can answer it, but I don't know if it's a question for the.
Can you clarify one more time what your question is, Trustee Mohammed?
And maybe this is a question for like your treasurer or finance committee or what, what steps were taken prior to knowing that we were, so we approved the budget in June and it was at 4.06%. Obviously there, you know, I'm assuming with the finance committee and the, you, you review the numbers and you, we know we were at this point, but what steps or plans did we take prior to approving that budget or even right after?
So since I was not, yeah, so I don't, I can't answer that either, right? Like I do know, I can say that in the fall, we took some steps to try to bring down expenses, right? Not knowing the full scope or magnitude. We reduced each schools, we have permanent substitute teachers in schools. So we reduced some of those numbers per school. We faded out some of our A2 virtual elementary program at the end of last school year. We transitioned our early on program to the WISD to actualize some savings. But beyond that, I, I'm not sure.
Maybe this is a question for, you know, Trustee.
So is your question, is your question, what, what plans were made when the board approved the budget at 4.06% in June?
Well, just to understand, like was there, I mean, we obviously approved the budget, but were there, just to understand what plans or just kind of around what has happened? Why did we get to this point?
So I, I obviously I wasn't here. But my understanding is, is that when the board approved the budget in June, there was no plan specified or laid out at that time as to how the board and how the, how the cabinet was going to address the 4.06% and move us into a, a higher range. My understanding is that we intended to have a realignment and to, at that point, figure out how to put us into a better fiscal position. But no plan was actually put into place. It's my understanding.
And I don't mean to pick, I was just trying to pick out of.
I'd like to address this, Trustee Mohammed.
Trustee Schmidt?
Sure. So we all approved that budget and it was made very clear to us by our previous superintendent that there would be a lot of work to do to align the budget. Because when we offer what our staff needed in those raises, and they absolutely deserved every cent they've gotten, you've got to make, you've got to make other adjustments to that. What happened, so let's go back in time a little bit. What happened is after that was voted on, there was a change of leadership on the board. There was then, within a month of the change in leadership, there was a push to take that superintendent out. So there was also conversations pleading from me, and I know the former superintendent, that there was time needed and work needing to do. But our eyes were taken off that ball. Because the transition that had to happen was to get rid of somebody and to prepare a whole district for somebody else. So something that was significant, it was truly significant.
Can I respond?
Trustee Baskett has not gone yet. We'll go Trustee Baskett and then come back to you, Trustee Mohammed.
We did not approve the budget with the four points, 4.06. That came after, at the audit time, we had that number. And once again, as the board was pushing to out the person with the thought, with the vision of how to realign our budget and ask for time to address this. And if you may remember, the board at first didn't even want that superintendent here to present the audit to answer those questions. So here we are, and we have to accept responsibility. We can push it off of whoever. But again, we knew what we were doing and we gave these wonderful people their deserved raise. And yes, you deserve more, but this was the best we can do. And if you remember, there are some trustees who didn't even want to approve the 13.1, saying that you deserved more and therefore it wasn't good enough. But again, here we are trying to adjust this. We have, we're not going to renig, we're going to move forward to figure out how to do this. So again, instead of trying to point fingers at one another or whoever, let's accept the responsibility. We've got to figure out how to make this work for everybody.
I'm sorry, that's.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yeah, so I'm sorry. I was just trying to figure out like as far as what led us to here. So not to put blame, because honestly, it's important for us to not make the same mistake or any issues, you know, like this before. But I did want to just clarify, you know, we were, I mean, obviously there, and again, I know that, you know, there was a lot going on in August or in end of June, there was a change in leadership. August was pretty, you know, there was a lot going on there. But, you know, I just wanted to understand, like I know that the finance committee meets also. I mean, I didn't see really any update as far as like, since we had our budget to whatever happened in August. So I just wanted to understand like what, cause honestly, I didn't, you know, I just wanted to understand what was planned, what was discussed, was the committee involved at that time when we knew that, you know, as far as, you know, what we approved as far as the budget in June. So it's really not to point fingers or anything, just to understand what has happened.
Trustee Dana?
Quick question first. You, you mentioned the audit, it's come up a couple of times. They audited last year's figures. Do they take a look at the current budget? The 20, when they audited in the fall, the previous year, do they look at the current budget?
So when we engage the auditors, they basically look at the previous year. So the auditors will usually come in the spring and do some testing. And then they'll come back in September. And they, after we close our books for the previous year, and then over a period of about six, seven weeks, they review all the numbers that we, that we have on our books and make sure that everything is reasonable and so forth. They don't, when they provide their opinion, it is for the previous year. They don't look at the, the current year budget and so forth.
Okay, thank you. My, my memory is that we approved a budget that had a funded equity of about 4.2%. So it wasn't 4.0, but we knew it was low. And we were, I mean, everybody knew it was low and the plan was to, you know, through what we were told, through efficiencies, we would get it back up. Everybody at this table in the community out here was shocked when we saw the 2.0%. And I'm still, I'm still tossing that $14 million line because that's, that's a huge amount. The reality is still that's where we are and we have to deal with it now. But you also said that once contracts are set, there's not that much you can do to alter the budget, at least significantly. There have been, you know, there've been the things that Ms. Parks mentioned. I know busing got consolidated a little bit, some other things that were meant to save some money here and there. But I, yeah, I mean, my, I'm, I just make a statement that I want to apologize. I have not done my oversight job to let the budget go through like this without catching that error. Apparently, you know, none of us did, but and, and part of that, we have to look at the system and the function of how much information we have access to. Or who else should be looking at it? Because, I don't know, it's, it's an egregious thing to think that we're going to be, you know, maybe not back to 6%, but inching our way back up from the 4.2% we thought we are. And instead, we're at, you know, 2% less. We were, we were told about the trends of enrollment, you know, and we said, okay, you know, we, we trust the administration. They'll pull it together. Dr. Swift has done an amazing job over 10 years, pulling rabbits out of the hat, keeping our fund balance above 6%. It just didn't happen this time.
Trustee Baskett?
So trustees, let me start with, I am surprised with your question. I mean, Trustee Mohammed, you were the president. If anyone should have known, you should have asked the question, okay? Trustee Gaynor, you've been on this board six years and you don't understand how an audit is done? I'm sorry, but you know, after six years, you should have known this. Okay, so let me, let me read.
I'm glad you're not casting blame here.
Let me, excuse me.
I said, I'm glad you're not casting blame.
So, so President Mohammed, you were here, okay? You were here, you were president, okay? And your predecessor was president. And you did not answer the question. I am on the finance committee now, but no one saw fit for me to be there before. So you want to say don't blame, but you keep blaming. So let's be very candid about it. Let me, let me read a few things. Let me read a few things that were in process. Things were happening, you just weren't aware of it. And things were made available, trustees. At each point, every year, before we go through the audit, the superintendent makes time for us, each one of us, to meet with the audit. the superintendent makes time for us, each one of us, to meet with the auditor. People made time to meet with the Chief Financial Officer, if that's what we chose.
No.
But let me, let me talk about a few of the things that were taken. Reduced, significantly reduced the A2 virtual elementary program. 15 positions. Redesign of the AAPS early on. Again, that's going to WISD. Reduction of 15 employees, recurring savings of 1 million plus. No change in services to the students and the families. Staffing reduction, okay? Balancing the staff to match the fall, 2023 enrollments across all campuses. We've also, at the cabinet level, talked about, we did not reassign people or fill the positions such as the Executive Director of Environmental Sustainability, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, a finance position, and an HR position. We reduced the number, as the interim superintendent mentioned, building substitutes. We limited limited training during the school day that reduced the number of substitutes. And these fine people can speak to that. Continued monitoring of the use of building substitutes to utilize full utilization and no cost. We even had central administration be substitutes, if you may remember. It's not like these things happened in the vacuum. It's not that we couldn't have seen it if we were looking for it. But somehow there were other agendas at play that not did not talk about the budget. You know I'm on record of saying, why are we doing this? We need to focus on the budget. The budget, the budget, the budget. And some trustees, how dare some trustees question my validity? When we were talking with these fine people, and those of you remember, in the caucus meetings, and we talked about, we need to focus on the budget. And I was questioned, like, I didn't know what I was talking about. Here we are, trustees, do we own this or not? We have no choice. We need to own this and figure it out. Stop trying to play the blame games. It's too late for that. Thank you.
Trustee Cahero.
Well, what I'm interested in is the $25 million that we're going to have to cut.
Right.
And where we're going to cut it. And I think that's why most of the dedicated employees are here tonight, to figure out to what extent it's going to affect their livelihood and their jobs, quite frankly. In our discussions, what we haven't talked about. Of course, our students. That's always at the, always at the forefront. I think if we want to look in the past to find why this transpired, I don't think you have to look much farther than 925 students that we lost and the resulting funds that we didn't receive as a result of that 925, while still maintaining pretty much all the services at the student level that we've tried to, including, which was already mentioned, increasing this pay subpay that we had. Because, let's face it, teachers do have to take time for their own personal mental health, which I support 100%. Again, I want to steer our conversation to the $25 million that we're going to have to cut. And so some questions I have is, or concerns, I don't even, they're not even questions, but I'll say this, I want to make sure that those cuts are proportional and that we consider everything to reorganization at the administration level, to cutting of the expansionist programs that have, over the past five to 10 years, have really put us, put us in a spot. I think the early ones, we've had this in our preliminary discussions already, our K5 IB programming, which costs quite a bit of money. Also, the closing of potential buildings that might actually seduce us quite a bit in savings. There's a lot of things for us to explore. I know that we have to make a decision on a lot of these things quickly. So we better start talking about it quickly to be as transparent with the public as we can so we don't leave this meeting with everybody guessing about how we're going to cut the $25 million and have some real thoughts about how it's going to affect their lives.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Dupree.
Hey. Just to start off, yes, we do have to take responsibility for this. This is our responsibility. It is one of the key tasks of a board member, is us being able to pay attention to our budget and make sure that our district has everything that it needs. And now people are going to be directly affected by what we did. And like Trustee Baskett says, we need to take responsibility for that. I also, I just want some clarification, like, some more specifics around the reductions we have to make. I want to know how they will actually look. Like, how are we going to make sure that when we start doing these reductions that one group is not affected more so than another? Like, how is that actually going to look and how are we going to go through that? We also acknowledge that our student enrollment is a major part of why we are where we are right now. So how do you address that? How do you plan on increasing student enrollment and making up for this so we don't have this happen again? One of the biggest things is, like I said, people are going to be directly affected by what we are doing here. And I just want to make sure that we are looking forward to see what we can do to make sure that this does not happen again. And we are on our job, but we do not drop the ball again.
Thank you, Trustee Cahero and Trustee Dupree, if I may. We, although now that we know the full scope of where we are and the amount that we are working with, and we are in the early phases of developing an action plan, which we will bring forward and transparently share with everyone. Everyone will know what the thinking is of the team in order to actualize the $25 million. I want to be clear about a few things, though, just so that there's no mistaking. We are going to prioritize students and student learning. We are going to prioritize equitable opportunities for learning and experiences for students. We're going to prioritize our staff well-being, as well as the well-being of our students in supporting our staff through some difficult times as best as we can. And we are going to work to maintain the high-quality educational standards that we have here in the district. To that end, we know that we need to engage with staff, with students, with our community, with our parents. And so we do have a series of steps that we are taking now that we are sharing this information with the community, which will involve engaging all of those folks that I mentioned so that we can get their input as we make the action plan and be prepared and prepared to bring it forward to the Board of Education and the community and our staff and our students. In the interim, we have begun, at my authorization, a full assessment of ways that we can generate and actualize some revenue. To Trustee Dupree, to your point, from what we can do from an enrollment perspective to the properties that we have, there's nothing off the table in our consideration for how to generate revenue that does not, in fact, people, our staff and our students. However, we do know that the largest recurring cost that we have is personnel. And so it pains, it pains us greatly to say that there will be some reduction in staff. And as we look at how we do that, we will, we will be governed by the board policy and regulations regarding reductions in staff. So that is what we will follow to make those decisions and determinations. In the meantime, in addition to authorizing a full assessment of what we will do to generate revenue, we've made some immediate steps because although the projected amounts are alarming and Mr. Demetrio said that for this year, we're pretty much are where we are, we're determined, if we can be a little higher, we want to be. And so we've made some immediate steps to address expenses that will hopefully lead to us having a higher fund balance to end the year and being in a little bit better position. To that end, we have frozen hiring. We have begun an in-depth review of all central office, district and school budgets to see where we can find efficiencies. We are renegotiating contracts with our vendors, as Mr. Demetrio shared with with everyone. And we are also reducing central office and administrative staff positions as a start, as a first step. And we will have those recommendations coming forward as the initial part of the action plan. So I do want to assure you that we are not waiting. We have already started some work behind the scenes as we were preparing to share this information with community, with staff. But we also know that we want to make those final recommendations after we get the input of everyone who will be impacted.
Trustee Baskett.
So first of all, thank you to my colleagues who are thinking about ahead and setting priorities. This is the first time we've talked about priorities and I don't think we're discussing them as well as we should, but I know some have more experience than others, so I accept that. But two, I think it would be very helpful to the interim superintendent, our thoughts regarding the priorities, because we, again, have to sign off and be responsible for. In the past, I don't know if I mentioned, we adapted our transportation system from a three-tier to a two-tier delivery system. And I don't want to go into the details right now unless the trustees want to ask. But I do understand from Mr. Demetrio, that meant we hired 13 more bus drivers. We added more bus drivers. And so again, that's a cost, but I I'm hesitant to go back to where we were because where we were wasn't so great. Okay? And again, I commend Durham and their team. Yes, it cost us more, cost us more than we initially thought because I remember that first contract when we privatized. But the past two years have been much better in terms of services. And yes, people will point out that we are still not perfect. But again, I'd like to understand more of if we are proposing to go to a two-year, two-tier system. I think we should also mention another other priorities that we've had in the past. For example, with split classrooms. Nobody liked those. And and I know we will hear from the community and our staff, you know, suggestions. Again, for some of us, this is still an initial shock. But like to understand more of the ramifications. As I understand it, we have set in our contract classroom sizes. And we've worked very hard not to get to the maximums. But this may be a time when we'll have to utilize what we can. Appreciate Ms. Parks and Mr. Demetrios to, again, walk us through the, as a board. And I know there is no final plan. And I appreciate Ms. Parks outlining some of the priorities that she's have identified. But we'll be hearing more from the community, I am so sure. But as trustees, we need to start talking about, for us, what are our priorities? Like I mentioned, not looking to go back to a two, a three-tier system if it is not going to help our students, but we also need to prepare our community, what does it mean in terms of those changes? So again, I look forward to talking with Ms. Parks and Mr. Demetrio of my thoughts. Again, it's still a little bit of a shock for me as well. But also would like to hear from other trustees to what they're thinking as well. Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt and then Trustee Mohammed.
So Superintendent Parks, you mentioned something about getting input from the community and our staff. Having been a teacher and having talked to some of the, my past colleagues, we know a lot of things that could be more efficient, I think, in our buildings. And I really hope that, and I know I can count on the leadership of the the union, that when there is a way to get your input, that you give it to us. Because I think that will make the superintendent's job a better product at the end. Because we, I mean, we just know we're, your boots are on the ground and you see what's happening and your input is just, to me, it's the, it's the most important input.
Trustee Mohammed.
Yeah, and I, you know, one thing that I wanted to, just some questions or things to consider when you're putting together the plan. I agree with, you know, Trustee Cahero, what he said about programming. So such things like the IB program, so programming at other schools, like thinking outside the box, obviously, when when making these recommendations, things that are not effective, potentially removing those, especially if it's additional costs. One thing is thinking about, and I'm not sure if this, you know, if you have the answer to this, but bringing things more in-house versus contracting them out, are those, would that impact the budget? Would it not? I'm not, again, I'm not sure how, you know, contracting, you know, especially if you want to bring things in-house, is it more cost-effective versus not? And then just, I know you meant, there was a mention, I don't know by who, about buildings. Obviously, the biggest, the most important thing is, you've stated, is that we cannot, we have to have very little, little impact to the classroom teachers, to the staff, to, you know, the people on the ground. So whatever decisions, it's important for us as a board to know what that impact is. You know, if you're, if there is a plan to shut down a building, let's say, how is that going to look like? And how is that going to impact our teachers and staff? Or if merging buildings, I don't know, I'm just throwing, I don't know what the plan is, but these are just things that we just, as a board, it's important for us to know.
So I see three hands. Trustee Baskett, you just, you just spoke, so I'm going to go to Trustee Dupree. Then I'm going to Trustee Cahero and then back to Trustee Baskett.
Yeah, mine is just really quick. And I know that, you know, during our initial meetings, I asked about some real property and other things that were looked at before the suggestion of the reduction in 25 mil. And I was wondering if we could get, like, a little bit more specifics of, you know, what some things you guys went over as possibilities to try to adjust this.
I can answer that. What I know that Mr. Demetrio is trying to focus on is figuring the the recurring cost that we need to eliminate and not just a one-time hit that won't ultimately change our situation. And I won't, I won't step on your toes anymore than that.
That is absolutely correct. We are negotiating with some of our vendors to reduce our costs. But like I mentioned earlier, that's about 10% of our budget. And the other 80% is staffing. We're going to try and minimize as much as possible the impact to the staff. But it is impossible to balance a budget and get out of meeting the state law and also a board policy without affecting staff. And also, it's very important that, even if we sell a building or any properties, that those are one-time revenues. They are not recurring costs. So we cannot. We can help temporarily, but it's not going to help in the long run.
We have a follow.
I know that we also, well, I asked a question about, like, notifying people. And I know that within, certain people have a certain amount of time that you have to notify them of this change. Could you go over some of that?
Sure. With administrators, our intention is to notify them before March 31st. With teachers, April 30th. Different union groups have different other timelines, varying from two weeks, three weeks. But our intention is to let almost everybody know before April 30th.
Trustee Cahero.
Just a clarification on, I heard you say, Ms. Parks, that we are doing some things now in order to reduce our end balance for the end of the year. And of all the things you mentioned, I heard all the different things that we've listed off. Can you tell me, or at least I guesstimate the dollar amount in the best-case scenarios of those? How close that would get us in terms of dollars to improve our budget?
Yeah, we are doing that assessment now to see what the dollar amount is. So that will be one of the first things that we share. Once we complete the assessment of all the positions that we're not hiring, that are still vacant, once we look at the salary reductions that we will be able to save with a reduction in in some of our staff, we're just doing all those calculations now, some of which are not done yet because we don't know exactly the, until we we do our regulations-governed reductions, we don't know who some of those folks will be so that we can have those accurate dollar amounts to know what savings we will have. So once we finish doing all that, we'll make sure to share the app, the the actual dollar amount.
Yeah, and just a clarification, you know, when I, when I said earlier about closing buildings, I wasn't just thinking about, or I don't think that discussions have been limited to buildings that we'd have, but also the recurrent buildings that have recurring costs. So I just wanted to make it clear what I was saying, that I understood that making a one-time closure or a sale of something would be a one-time cost. But I don't think that would ever get us to the yearly, the yearly savings in occurrence of $25 million for just the first year and then the subsequent years afterward.
True. Trustee Baskett.
So first of all, let me say, I think we need to be very cautious regarding the cuts. We do, we can't victimize our programs and then expect us to increase our enrollment. We've seen this in other districts where they have cut and cut. And God bless the district that doesn't have one AP class. Okay? So I really want to emphasize, again, I think Trustee Cahero said, the one-time savings, but long-time costs. I want to really address the fear, the rumor of closing buildings.
I want to really address the fear, the rumor of closing buildings. I don't think we're there yet, and I don't want people to panic. Because when you talk about closing buildings, those children have to go somewhere. And then that means a rebusing or that we lose them out of the district. So again, I think we need to be very careful about that. We are committed to our staff, we are committed to our community. I think we can get through this bump. It's just like COVID came out of nowhere and we had to adjust, we have to make some adjustments now for the long haul. All I can ask our staff and our community is work with us. You know, we don't want to lose anymore, but we can't be doing stupid things like ceasefire resolutions, okay? I'm sorry. I'm really worried about the losses that we have there. And yes, maybe I shouldn't have said it, but again, we are incurring losses because of that. So let's look at what we as a board can do to be more responsible, and that includes learning how budgets work. When we talk about bringing back people in-house, remember why we outsource them. What's the retirement number now? 52% on every dollar? You know, I mean, and I just had a conversation with a bus driver today, asking, can we bring transportation back in? And I reminded him, I think at the time it was 40 cents on every dollar. And yes, your pay wasn't so great, but it wouldn't get better now. Now we've got 52%. So we have to work under the conditions we have to make them better, not to say that we have to keep them, but before we throw everything out, let's examine what we have and how we can fine tune. Again, Ms. Parks, I want to commend your work. You have been working without a CFO since December, December. And thank you, Mr. Demetrios, for coming back to help us, but we know you're short-term. You've already told me you're out of here. Okay, time for your wife's birthday. So, you know, we have to be mindful of that. And I guess that would be my question to put on your list, and I don't need the answer right now, Ms. Parks, but how is this affecting us hiring a CFO and all the other positions that we have to have? I mean, we can't run a district without a permanent CFO. Okay? And trustees, I mean, it goes without saying, this could affect our superintendent search as well, and we have to be mindful of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kara-Harrow and then trustee Muhammad.
You know, I find it, trustee Basket, I'm going to address it to you, is I find it difficult for you to say, have a discussion about what our priorities are, and then when we say what our priorities are, you tell us to be careful what we're talking about. So to me, that's two different things. And as far as your comment to the AP classes, I wasn't here, but you can believe that I looked at the performance report that recently came out at the recent meeting. And to me, I don't think we necessarily need expansionist programs when some of the most basic skills that our students need aren't being met. So to expand into other areas, I know that that's great for what we'll call, and I don't even like using the phrase, high-achieving students, okay? But I will say that there are students here who their basic needs aren't being met, and our teachers are more than capable of being able to meet those needs without having those programs.
Thank you. Trustee Muhammad and back to trustee Basket.
So we're talking about 25 million. So honestly, what my priorities are, and I hope, you know, I'm sure the board, that's, this is our priorities, is for us to make sure that, you know, we are teaching our students and they're getting the best, you know, effective education and that we are protecting the on-the-ground teachers and staff. So honestly, when it comes to programming, my point was, is that we need to look at ineffective programming, and I'm not saying there, where it's not really helping with enrollment, but it's also not, you know, it is a cost that we can take off the table to hopefully save, you know, jobs. So that's what I'm looking at programming. We need to look at, I mean, we have, and I was actually very surprised to see like, just, it was wonderful that we expanded in programming. We have AP, we have IB, we have STEAM, we have all of this, and some of it was effective as increasing enrollment. It did. Some schools, it's very important to have them there, but some schools it wasn't. So we have to look at that. And sometimes we have to give up programming to, to make sure that, you know, we protect the jobs of our staff and teachers. And then also, you know, I did want to stress again, looking at the trends, I mean, yes, right now, we are, you know, I, you know, we are in a situation where we have to, you know, make up 25 million, which is a large amount. But also, this did not just happen unfortunately overnight. So we just have to, this is why I keep, not again, not to blame anyone, not to, sometimes we have to look at the root cause analysis, look at what happened, why did we get here? And then how do we address that? And it seems like, it seems like it's more focused on enrollment and again, the number of staff that have increased. So that's, that's why I keep looking at the past so we can look at how we can fix this.
So I want us to take a break here shortly. It is Ramadan, and we do want to respect the people who have to, who need a break as a result of that. So I'm asking for a 10-minute break, and then we can come back and finish this discussion and determine how we want to move forward. If we can pick up our discussion where we left off, I believe trustee Basket, I don't know if you still had a question, but your hand was raised prior to us stepping away. Did you still have a question or a comment?
A couple, thank you, President Feaster. So I just wanted to respond to trustee Kara-Harrow's perceived criticism of looking for priorities. It's, and I apologize if you see it as a criticism, but it was truly a caution. Cutting programs is not going to get us to the 25 million, especially when you look at the investment that we've made and to, you can't turn off a spigot. We've talked about, talked a little bit about the impact to the enrollment, but be cautious, I would say, to all of our trustees, whether we're speaking here, on Facebook, or whatever, about the ideas without understanding, number one, the history of how we got here, and understanding the potential impact, just the perception, just the fear that could be placed in our community, and we don't need that at this point. We really need people to help us understand and to work with us.
I think, and I'll just speak in further, I think what trustee Kara-Harrow is saying is he wants us to explore all possible ways that we can reduce aside from just staffing, but I'll let him speak for himself on that issue.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I'll just say, you know, my words are my words, so please don't try to rephrase them and say that I thought that we were going to cut $25 million with cutting programming. It's a combination of things, and that's what the approach was for this year. That ought to be our approach for the long term, and that's all I'm getting at is that when you ask us to say what our priorities are, I think when we say what our suggestions are, those reveal in and of themselves what our priorities are. So to me, I mean, it's this or that, it's whatever suggestions are we make here, of course, there is fear in the public, that's why everybody's here today. There's a little bit of fear about their jobs, and that strikes me as being somewhat obvious. So to say that any additional comments I make is going to strike fear into the public, I think is just dishonest.
Thank you, trustee. I saw trustee Schmidt, I believe, did you have a hand up, trustee Schmidt?
I want to once again agree that we need to make sure whatever we do, we have to keep thinking of enrollment. When I was living in East Lansing, I watched Waverly Schools decide that it would be a great savings to take all freshman sports out. They lost so many students to Holt and Lansing, Hazlet, East Lansing, because parents wanted their kids to play freshman sports. And so they ended up, it was, it was a bad situation for them. What I've seen in other districts in Lansing, when I was leaving that district as a teacher, there was a decision, do we cut staff or do we renegotiate a contract where we have no preps? And that's what they did, of all things. I mean, teachers didn't have any preparation time. There was another district that Wayne Westland, where I went from Lansing to Wayne Westland and taught there for a year before I came to Ann Arbor, everybody did a 5% cut. We don't want that. We want these raises to stay with these teachers. So, but we have to continue to remember enrollment numbers, that is our revenue. We can't raise the price of a car like the UAW, they got that great contract, right? We're not a private entity, we can't do that, we don't have a product. And so, but we just, we always just have to keep thinking, if we cut this, how many students are we going to lose? That, because we've got to keep the people coming to our school district.
I saw trustee Basket's hand, and then I'll come back to trustee Kara-Harrow.
Yeah, let me say, you know, first of all, trustee Kara-Harrow, it's not all about your comments. And my thought, again, my putting the words out there is to caution everybody, not just one particular person, so please understand that. We understand, we as a board understand that we couldn't be Ann Arbor Public Schools in the excellence that we have without our staff. We understand that because no matter what buildings, if we don't have the right staff to teach, then, you know, we are not. So we'll get through this, we have to figure out how to get through this. And again, thank you, trustee Schmidt, for, you know, your storytelling about the losing planning time. I mean, my gosh, that is quite a commitment and sacrifice. What, I just want to assure people, we have no solid plan of anything. I think we are all still in shock on how to make this adjustment at this time. So we're throwing out thoughts, I understand that, and again, I put a caution out there, it wasn't well received, but also want to stress to the community, we have nothing etched in stone right now. This is our first time communicating to the world, not only our wonderful teachers, but to everybody, to prepare for things to come. It would not have been fair had we come and said, we're going to do this and just do it, because that's not how we do things in Ann Arbor Public Schools and the Ann Arbor community. So thank you, Mr. President Feaster, for the time.
And to your point, I think we do have a good, a great interim superintendent. We have Mr. Demetrios back, thank you very much for being here. They've identified the problem, and now we have to fix the problem. And so we thank them for catching the problem, and now we're going to focus on getting that problem corrected. Trustee Kara-Harrow, then Muhammad.
I'll just be very quick, I know one thing that has not been said aloud yet is the possibility of offering early retirement. So to me, that is another option that I think would be on the table to let some of our younger teachers, you know, let their careers advance.
Thank you, trustee Kara-Harrow. Trustee Muhammad?
And just a stress, yes, enrollment is important, and we should still have the programs and look at the programs that are out there that is helping increase enrollment. But our priority is really to save, you know, the teacher and staff jobs versus, you know, one or two, you know, freshman sport. I mean, we have to balance it out, but we should look at, you know, the, what is bringing in enrollment and keep those programs. But for the extra, I mean, we just have way too many programs, to be honest.
And I think they're exploring all those possibilities. There's the side of increasing revenue, and there's the side of decreasing expenses. And so I think they're exploring all those possibilities, and they'll come back with a great point. Trustee Dupree?
So trustee Basket asked that, you know, we kind of named our priorities when, you know, dealing with this. So I think that my priorities were kind of clear, but if they're not, I'm just going to kind of boil them down. One, if we, when we have to make these reductions, doing them in a way that has the least impact to our staff as possible and least impact to our students as possible. So when we do have to make these reductions, if we have to reduce staff, doing so in a way that's equitable. So, you know, one group is not being affected more so than the other, and making sure that people have enough time to plan when they're actually, if they have to be affected in this way. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just going to say it like this, I am very accustomed to being broke. So when we're thinking about job changes and you have to change things for your whole family, you have to budget, you have to figure out how you're going to just figure things out. So people need to be aware of what's going to happen in a time enough for them to plan for their families. So those are my priorities, the impacts, the people impact that this is going to have.
Thank you. Trustee Dana?
I've been quiet for a long time, honestly, because I don't have anything very constructive to say. It reminds me of back in COVID times. It's like there, it was awful, there were no good options. And $25 million we have to make up or close to it. We can chip away at it here and there, but there's going to be some painful layoffs. And so I wanted to explore that a little bit. Notices, pink slips have to go out to administrators in the next two weeks or so, almost two and a half weeks, and teachers later. When we did this in, I don't know, was it 2010 or so, there were pink slips. At that point, there was a lot of maneuvering over the summer. People didn't always land back in the position they wanted, but we eventually got everybody back. I'm not sure that's going to even happen this time. But Ms. Parks, or I'd call teachers because you're experienced, what's, what's it going to look like? You know, the, the pink slip doesn't mean it's an intent, it's a notice that you may lose your job, and then I'm assuming we'll be doing the communication, the talking, the maneuvering, the decision-making here at the table. But can we talk a little bit about what that looks like and what follows? That's one thing I think it's important, I mean, it's, this is a shock for everybody, but I don't want to make any decision today. We are going to have to make some decisions by next week because of that March 31st deadline for administrators. But I want some give and take, some feedback. But, you know, is it worth it to talk a little bit about what the layoff notices, that process looks like in terms of decision-making? And I know we can't be too specific.
Yeah, so right now, we have to determine who would get noticed. Once we determine who gets noticed, then that process will follow the regulations that we have outlined in policy around reduction in staff or reduction in personnel. And we will, we will stick with that process. We have been working, Ms. Langford and her team already, to make sure our process is going to be ready and in place once we've identified who will be impacted. But right now, I don't have a specific number or how we will go about identifying that is going to be dependent upon the decisions that are made and what is reduced, either programming-wise or staffing.
Trustee Schmidt?
I'd like for Mr. Demetrios to address the buyout idea, because I had asked you that before, and I just don't want to give people the idea that that's coming. I mean, can you talk about that a little bit?
My own personal opinion is that buyouts of early retirement, we, we will be paying people that are already going to retire more money to retire. We might entice people from the following year, maybe they will retire the following year, then we would also pay them extra to leave. In, in my, when I was here previously and also other positions that I, that I held in public schools and so forth, it is my experience that in order to make sense for the school district, depending on the size and so forth, we can only pay like $4,000, or in order for the school district to make sense. In our case specifically now here, we expect to have approximately $6 million in fund balance this year. So we don't have the money. We already borrowed money this year, we paid it back, we will have to borrow again in order to make ends meet. So we don't really have the cash in order for us to even entertain at this point. I will say also this, the school district expenditure is about 320 million. If we have the reductions of 25 million, we'll be in the neighborhood of 295 to 300 million, depending what increases we get from the state and other factors and so forth. So I believe with $300 million, we can offer a great education, a great program for all the students that we have in our school district. Even though we will have to make those reductions, we will still have a very robust educational program in Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one more question before, before we move on, move back to the presentation. Given the situation that we are in now, if we choose to do nothing or choose not to make these reductions that you are suggesting, given that we've already received a letter from the state, we're already under the 5% required, what will happen if we choose to do nothing to continue down our path, both financially and from the state perspective?
Okay. So we expect this year to be about approximately $6 million in fund balance, which is approximately, and using about 6.6 of our fund balance. which is approximately, and using about 6.6, um, over fund balance, which will carry over, if we don't do anything, it will carry over into next year. We only have about 6.3 million in our fund balance. So automatically we are looking, without doing anything, we're looking at a negative. And then if you assume healthcare will go up, you assume the retirement rate will go up. If we continue the trend of enrollment losses because the birth rate is, it's been reduced as well. So those things, all those things need to take into account. We know we will have some retirements. We know we will have some additional income. So we're expecting if we don't do anything that we will be at least one and a half to the five million, even if we don't give raises, we don't give steps and all those kind of things, um, we're, we're going to be in a deficit situation, um, next year. The letter that we received from the state indicates that they expect us, they're using data, data from three years, 22, 23 is the latest information they have. They do not have the 23, 24 information. They think that we will be in deficit in 25, 26. I'm here to tell you that's going to happen next year, not going to be 25, 26 because they don't have this year's data. If they put this year's data in their model, they will definitely tell us that. If we do go into deficit, um, there, we put in the district that in, in danger of being managed eventually by an emergency financial manager, which is the last thing that we, 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 we wanted to. We, we're in charge of our own destiny and we need to make the adjustments that are necessary in order for us to have a financially viable school district, uh, that can eventually, you know, that can give raises, that can take care of staff, that it can educate its students. So I hope I answered your question.
You did. Thank you. Trustee Dupree?
Just for my own understanding, do you have an example of a district where that actually happened, uh, where the state had stepped in and kind of what did that look like when it happened to them?
Yes, I, I've actually, um, uh, have experience. In my previous life, I worked for an ISD and in one of the school districts in the county, went in deficit. So when, when that happened, then the governor appointed a panel, basically. And it was made out of people from treasury, from the state budget office, from Michigan Department of Education and also from the, uh, Michigan Business Officials, which is another state organization. So the panel was charged with making a recommendation to the governor if, uh, emergency financial manager should come into the school district, um, or not. So they came to the school district and they spoke to the superintendent, they spoke to the board, they spoke to the union groups, uh, to parents who ever wanted to make a statement. And then, um, then they make a recommendation, I think they have 10 days after those meetings to make a recommendation to the governor. And they decided to, um, bring in an emergency financial manager, um, which, um, he came in May. He started, the emergency financial manager started in May. The hearing, I believe, was held in March. And by July, the school district, the whole school district was made into a charter school. Uh, that was one example. Another example, I, um, I was involved in Detroit when, um, 20, I believe in 2015 through 2017, I worked for Detroit and I was involved with, um, the emergency financial manager that was there, uh, two of them, Mr. Donna Early and Mr. Judge Stephen Rhodes. And I was there when the government, the state government decided to give Detroit Public Schools 700 million to get Detroit Public Schools out of their, um, financial distress. So I have, um, very distinct experiences with emergency financial managers. And if they do come, they have, uh, what I would call czar powers. They can, uh, cancel any contract, whether it's union contract or, or, or sections of a contract. They, they can basically, they have 18 months to fix the situation. So I, I, I think that we do not want to go down that road, that we want to be in charge of our own destiny and we can manage, um, we can manage the finances.
Okay. All right. Uh, well, we need to try to move forward a little bit. Would you mind explaining to the trustees what specifically we are amending in the budget or voting to amend down the budget so that it's clear before we move into that?
So the current budget that is on the books, right? And it's very normal to, to amend the budget once or twice a year. So the budget was adopted based on certain assumptions last June, um, last spring. So a lot of things have happened since last June, enrollment, for example. You know, the, the enrollment that we have, um, grants that we received, um, a lot of different things have happened. So we're basically took a, you know, a look in February and we're correcting all the, uh, the budget to basically what we think is going to be at the end of the year. There is going to be another amendment in June where we're going to take another close look and see what's happening. We're going to see hopefully some of the things that we're putting in place by freezing positions of those things, there might be some savings. So hopefully we'll, that will make a difference in, in, in our bottom line. So this is something that, um, you know, and anything that, that, that happens between now and, and, and June, we will, uh, we will adjust at that time.
And all of that is identified on that page five, the small graphics that you posted. So you have it in your documents, trustees, that show the changes of the original and the proposed changes. So.
So, yeah, we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Trustee Gainer?
We're speaking about the resolution we have on our files, correct?
Yeah, we're voting, we're discussing, uh, 23, 24 GF budget amendment presentation, uh, that's page number five.
All right, okay. I need to get back and be clear in my question.
Yes, sir.
There's a budget amendment resolution that we have not talked about yet, unless this is what we're talking about now.
Could we ask the staff to put that on the screen, please?
Yes.
It's very.
They'll, they'll have to blow it up because it's too small.
Very small, even if there's a way to blow it up. If not, I'll try to figure it out.
But Trustee Mohammed?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, I think it's outlined in the, there's like a document that says resolution. That might be bigger.
No, but it's, this doc, yeah, but, but what President Feaster was alluding to on page five, it shows you again, the before and after picture, if you will.
Right. It's a little more clear where you can see the numbers as they were on June 30th, 2023, uh, and how they are to be amended as of February 2024. And it shows the original versus the amended. So it makes it much more clear, uh, where you can see the changes.
For full transparency.
Yes.
It's in the, it's in the presentation, the budget amendment.
I just want to make sure all trustees were aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
So can I clarify my question?
Yes, Trustee Gainer.
I, I don't have a problem with, I don't think I have a problem with, um, okaying this, although we haven't done our, again, we haven't done our checking. So I'm not sure we should do it today, but there's a separate resolution that not only talks about these changes, but gives the superintendent the authority to do, make any decision she chooses to, to deal with the deficit, basically giving her unlimited authority, which is something we may decide we wish to do. I trust, uh, Ms. Parks to make good decisions and follow proper procedures. I don't feel comfortable, um, throwing out all this information today and immediately, passing that resolution with that authority until there's a public look at all of this information. So I'm, I'm, you know, I don't see anything here that's up for a vote. It's just data. But the resolution says, yes, we agree to this budget amendment and we agree to give the superintendent's decision-making, all decision-making, um, to do as she will without, really without our advanced input.
Understood.
President Feaster?
Yes, Trustee Baskett?
Uh, may we ask, uh, Trustee Gainer to highlight which section he's talking about of giving the interim superintendent all power? From what I'm reading, I don't interpret that. So if you could help us, sir?
So, uh, in the general fund budget amendment resolution?
Yes.
On the second page?
Under the resolved, be further resolved?
Be it further resolved.
Okay.
Um, the second, let me see if I have this right. The second paragraph, be it further resolved, that for purposes of meeting the needs of the school district, the superintendent or his or her designee is permitted to implement adjustments and or transfers within line items of the budget adopted by the board, subject to later authorization of the Board of Education. When the, those decisions are made, it, they'll be reported to the board at a scheduled meeting. But this, the way I read this, this gives the superintendent authority to do whatever she pleases. And again, I think we may and should probably do that at some point. I don't think it should be done today.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe that, um, paragraph gives superintendent the ability to, to reduce staffing or anything of that nature, if that's what you're concerned about. I think that if we're going to go down that path, then that will come forward at a later time period. But Mr. Demetrius and interim superintendent Parks, please correct me if I'm wrong.
First, this is the language that we've used for, for many, many years.
Okay.
I believe that language refers to, um, so let's just say we have in basic programs, which is one of the functions. So if we go there, it has 147,207,000. So we want to move maybe 100,000 from there and then we'll move, transfer it to added needs, which is another function. The total, the total number of the budget is not changing. We're just moving things within it that we have the flexibility to do that. We're not, uh, we're not changing the budget, um, without, when, when I say changing, it's like adding expenses or cutting, um,
Right, okay.
Without coming to the board first.
And, okay, I can, I can read that paragraph with that interpretation as, you know, as long as I have your assurance, that's what it is.
And I would, I would also, I would add that as far as reductions in, in personnel, the board has to vote on that. So that's not a unilateral decision, but it is standard language because that is what the superintendent does.
Okay.
That's the charge of the superintendent.
I, I made, I had a different interpretation and I stand corrected. Thank you.
Fair enough. All right. Trustees, given that you had a chance to, uh, read the resolution and, uh, view the page five of the, uh, the, uh, current budget versus amended budget. I'm sorry, Trustee Kara Hero?
I'd still like to make a clarification on what Trustee Gainer has pointed out.
Okay.
So although I do know it would, uh, that, um, the reduction of staff wouldn't, would not be, would not be a unilateral decision, that doesn't necessarily mean that other decisions that didn't involve staff were not unilateral. Do I, do I understand that right?
So, yes, uh, in general, although our commitment is that though, any decisions made regarding the action plan of how we're going to address the 24 million will be with the input of our, our community, which includes our staff and students.
Okay, because I, I really didn't have an issue, Trustee Gainer, with the first clause. What I have an issue is with the second clause, which, which reads down there that with the general subution of the execution of the budget adopted by, so that, that, that part would suggest some kind of operational move as opposed to, uh, as, as opposed to another move.
I, I think they're asking to, to have the, uh, resolution 2024, uh, 0313 GF budget. It's a Word document. They're asking to have that put on the screen, please.
And I guess, and I guess a clarification for this, so we don't get bottled in semantics, might be to provide an example of what that might mean.
Okay. And it's the last paragraph, uh, under be it further resolved, that I believe Trustee Kara Hero was speaking on.
Yeah.
So forgive me for not knowing 100% if, if this is, if this is what you mean, but my interpretation would be that the superintendent or the assistant superintendent of finance is charged with the, the execution of the budget, right? And then within that budget, there are, uh, transfers that are made to other departments and divisions. And the superintendent is responsible for, for ensuring that those budgets, uh, that those monies and dollars that have been assigned to other departments, um, are, um, are done or, are, are monitored in a way that is fiscally responsible.
Yeah, now I understand. So it's a, it's a matter of moving the line items.
Yeah.
Understood.
Yeah.
My understanding is that there's no, no increase or no decrease to the general budget, but this allows the interim superintendent and the assistant superintendent of finance to move those monies around within those line items, but not changing the total.
But by moving the line items, right, and allocating the money to a different area of the budget, that would some, sometimes in, um, impact operations.
That's true. One of the examples I shared about what we're doing right now is reviewing.
I'm just asking for clarification, just because it's been raised. That, that would be within your purview, what you normally do anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's exactly what I was going to share. Yep, yep. Yep.
Did you have something?
No, I was just going to move that we accept this resolution.
All right. Move by Trustee Schmidt. Is there support?
Second.
Support by Trustee Dupree. Any other additional discussion?
I have the question of if we don't do it, what will happen? I mean, we need work, we need to get busy.
So this, 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 um, resolution amends this year's budget and it basically shows a truer picture because the current budget shows that we're going to be adding to the fund balance, um, over $6 million, when in fact, we estimate that we're going to use about 6.6 million dollars of our fund balance. So this budget amendment will show a truer picture of what we expect to happen this year. So when you get the audit in November, this number will be closer to what the audit should be. Uh, we don't want to have an audit that we're showing that we're going to add to the fund balance and the audit comes and it shows that we're going to use 6.6 million with about $13 million off. So this is what this, um, amendment accomplishes.
And to that point, I've asked interim superintendent Parks and Mr. Demetrius to help us come up with a better system for our monthly monitoring reports, one that shows a projection for the end of the year and maybe projections beyond that, so that we actually aren't just seeing a snapshot in time of our, of our fund balance, but we see how it's trending and so we can make better decisions and be better, you know, uh, more, uh, updated with what our real financial picture is. And so we're going to be trying to change the way we do monthly monitoring as well so that we actually know what's happening. Trustee Baskett?
And if I may, President Feaster, we, we have done that in the past, looked at three and five-year projections, but I think we should start first with professional development of the board to understand school finance and how to read these documents as well as long-term budgeting.
Thank you.
So that's an appeal for the community if they want to help us out.
Thank you. All right, there is a motion on the floor that has been supported. Is there any more discussion around that? It was supported, but Trustee Schmidt made a motion to approve the budget. Trustee Dupree supported that motion. We're having discussion now. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Otsinski, please.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Kara Harrow?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demetrio. Really appreciate your help and your educating us tonight.